Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Thank you very much for coming and your patience. I am Jonathan Van Fleet, the editor of The Concord Monitor. Welcome to the Concord Candidate Forum here at Millbrook School. I'd like to thank everyone for your patience again. The school district has been generous in giving us this space to use. Thank you to the school district. Thank you to the candidates who have been able to make it out tonight. Thank you to Concord TV. Thank you, Josh.
And Matt and other people.
There's, I wanted to introduce you to a few of the people that you'll be hearing from tonight. And also let everyone know tonight, and who may be watching this later, that videos of tonight's forum will be available at YouTube, ConcordNHTV, and at the ConcordMonitor.com. They should be live at least by Monday. The election is still a ways away, so there'll be a resource there for weeks to come. The initial, Kathryn McGlaughlin is our city reporter. She has been doing interviews with the candidates at Concord TV Studios, and those videos are now going up today and tomorrow. We have two forums, two citywide forums tonight. This is the At Orange Race. These are two of the five candidates. Two of the candidates let us know that they had prior commitments. It's Amanda Grady Sexton and Bob Washburn. And then the fifth candidate, Jean Chase, we had not heard from her one way or the other. Our moderators tonight, Kathryn McGlaughlin and Amelia Vishnevsky. I've been practicing that. They'll be asking the questions. And the two forums were scheduled for an hour each. I think we may condense the time down to 45 minutes-ish, just so we can get everything in tonight and we don't go over time. But thank you again for coming, and I am going to hand this microphone over.
Thank you, John, and thank you all again for joining us. We're going to start with one minute of opening statements. And as with a lot of things tonight, we're going to be going in alphabetical order. So councillor Fred Keach, you'll go first.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to thank Concord TV and The Concord Monitor for hosting this forum. You know, there's only about 10 weeks in between the filing date and the election, so it's a really compressed time, so these opportunities to get out before the public are really helpful. So thank you. My message and goals are pretty straightforward. I've got three kinds of priorities. The first is I want to live in a community that prioritizes public safety. I want to live in a community that fosters economic development. And thirdly, I want to live in a community where affordable housing is in reach for all. We cannot continue to tax the average person at Concord. This has really become an issue, both for young folks and retired folks. Basically, people on both ends of the spectrum. I was first elected on the council at age 46. And to be honest, the first couple of years were a bit of a learning curve for me. But during those 18 years, I sort of settled on one axiom that has guided me in my policymaking and decision-making. And that's really to find out if, when the community comes to us, whether they have a want or a need. And sort of determine how to spend those limited dollars and make sure they go towards needs, not just wants. Just like in your own household, every day we make decisions about how to best spend our limited resources. And truly, we need to make sure it's a need and not a want. The cornerstone of any community's success is public safety.
Councillor, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. With that, I will answer questions as we go forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. DeShimy, you're up.
Hello. My name is Fisto DeShimya. First of all, thank you so much, Concord Monitor and The Concord TV. I think we work together great and you guys do a great job. I really appreciate how you keep the community informed. I come from Democratic Republic of Congo. I came here as a refugee, running away from war and genocide. And I left my parents back home. And I want to tell you that coming to Concord, I remember when my dad used to tell me, which he still talks to me, he said that, "I think you can do it. Whatever you want to aim, you can do it." And he's also a politician. He believes that this is my journey. And when we arrived in Concord in 2016, I felt like Concord is a city with a deep history and real momentum. Our responsibility now is to make sure that progress works for everyone, for every neighborhood and every family. I'm running because I believe leadership must be about results. Clear goals, honest budgeting, and decisions that strengthen the future instead of stretching the present. During the past several years, I have built partnerships that deliver as a community activist and advocate.
Mr. DeShimy, I'm so sorry I have to cut you off.
Thank you. I'll follow up with questions.
Well, thank you so much, candidates. So we're going to start with general questions for the both of you. And to start off with, as citywide representatives, your constituents include people who live in Pennecook. They use Memorial Field at a far lower rate, if at all, compared to other Concord residents and Concord school district members. Should there be a carve-out or a leave on Pennecook taxpayers related to that project? And we'll start with councillor Keach.
We can't understand you.
Okay. Okay. I'll repeat the question here. Sorry, everybody. Okay. So as citywide representatives, your constituents include people who live in Pennecook. They use Memorial Field at a far lower rate, if at all, compared to other Concord residents and Congo school district members. Should there be a carve-out or a leave on Pennecook taxpayers related to that project? And again, councillor Keach.
Thank you. The simple answer for me is no. There should not be a carve-off of Pennecook residents. The fact is, Pennecook-
Your headphones might have you out.
It wasn't on. That's probably- I think I got it now. So the short answer is no. There should not be a carve-out for Pennecook. The simple answer is the municipal tax rate for Pennecook is identical to what it is for Concord. So they are taxed the same. They receive the same services. The difference in the tax rate is the school end of it. And some years ago, 1960s or whatever, they made a determination to leave the Concord district and form the Merrick Valley School District. That's the differential tax rate. But in terms of city services, they're taxed equally. There should be no special exception for the village of Pennecook.
And mine says also, no. I'm running because I want to make sure that I can lower cost on everything. We're talking about housing. We're talking about parks. We're talking about everything. We shouldn't be taxing our citizens. We shouldn't be taxing our homeowners or anything else. We should be taxing developers, people that are coming in as business owners. And with your question, I don't think that's a move I would want to support. Thank you.
We're going to move on to Loudoun Road. This summer, a female pedestrian was killed on Loudoun Road. And more recently, another woman on a bicycle also died in a hit-and-run. Yip Kuddin City Master Plan Review will undoubtedly take a close look at Loudoun Road. A proposal a few years back to narrow it down to a single travel lane with a central turning lane was dropped. Do you think that there are urgent traffic safety concerns on Loudoun Road? And more broadly, what do you think Concord wants to see that area look like in the coming years? We'll start with Mr. DeShimy.
Okay. Yeah, so Loudoun Road in general, yes, it's never safe. It's not safe for families, for young people. And the safety of a community is becoming more and more concerned to our community. What we need to look into, and I want to give you the solution to that. I want to make sure that people understand where we're moving. I think Concord is still not a welcome city for young people. And we see there's a lot of movement. Young people are moving away because our roads are not safe. So I think the concern, whether there's safety issue, that's an accurate argument. But the real question is, what can we do to strengthen our community and to solve the problem about the safety in roads and make sure that we have modern transportation adapted in our community? To make sure young people are welcome.
Thank you. I think Loudoun Road truly is more and more of a problem. And just in the last couple of months, we've seen a couple fatalities. There's a lot of traffic calming measures that can be taken. I know knee-jerk reaction when people say, "Narrow it down to one lane," is like, "My goodness, four lanes aren't even getting the job done now. What's two lanes going to look like?" But I will say, my experience with reducing Main Street from four lanes to two lanes has been a huge success. It's slow traffic. It's made it a much safer thoroughway. So I'm not opposed to looking at that. I think there are some measures that could be taken, such as restricting left-hand turns in both directions, so you don't have that crossover, crossing four lanes. But there's a number of issues that can be taken to make it safer. It also should be noted that the Heights in the Loudoun Road corridor is an area of the city where the residents and the population, I think more seldom than any other part of the city, rely on public transportation, foot travel, bicycle travel. And they're not in cars, and they don't have the added protection of being in a motor vehicle. So we really need to pay attention to the folks that live in the neighborhood because I think oftentimes, the residents in the Heights are forgotten. And we too often think of the Heights as just a commercial, big box, commercial zone. And we forget about the folks that are living in apartments and homes just off Loudoun Road. But there's a substantial number of people that call the Heights a home. And I think we need to appreciate that and make Loudoun Road much more safer because it has become a problem.
Thank you so much.
Is there a case for a follow-up on that? Okay, yeah. So what I wanted to add on that is, and I'm in support with most of the things that he's talking about. But when we look into the history of our roads, especially Loudoun Road, you realize that there has never been a strategy. There's never been a closed-up strategy of how to solve the issue of that area and how to connect to our community. And the fact that our community is still divided, the fact that there's no strategy to figure out how to bring back the community together and to unite our community, that is also part of it. Let's not forget that that's also part of it. That's part of the safety issue.
Thank you so much. So we'll move on to police now. While there have been persistent vacancies in the Concord Police Department- Can you be- okay. So there's been persistent vacancies in the Concord Police Department. Council has approved adding vacant positions to the force, which needs additional overtime expenses to fill the shifts. At the same time, crime went down last year even with those vacancies. Would you support a reduction in the number of patrol positions in the police department to reduce personnel costs? And we'll start with councillor Keach.
Thank you. I would not be in favor of reducing the number of patrol positions in the police department. I spent a brief five years as a police officer in Portland, Maine, so I have a little bit of experience about what that looks like. And I know from that brief experience that the more proactive policing can be, the more effective policing is. And when I say proactive policing, that doesn't translate into arrests or enforcement, but that translates to community policing. That translates to cops being out in the community, interacting with schools, the neighbors, the kids, spending time in parks. But the more positive interactions we can have with our police officers and our citizens, the better. But I would not be in favor of reducing the number of police officers at all. Now, I would be in favor of adjusting their role and the expectations we have of them. And we've started a little bit of that already through the use of social workers. You know, again, back when I was a cop, an old salty guy came up to me and said, "You're the new kid." I said, "Yes, sir, I am." And he said, "Well, basically, you're a social worker that's been given a gun." I said, "That's a pretty good explanation." Then another guy, a little more cynical, said, "Hey, you're the new kid." I said, "Yes, sir." I said, "You're basically a human garbage collector. Get used to it." Wow, that's a little harsh. But the point is, they're the ones on the ground. They interact with our people. The more positive interactions we can have, the better. And I would not be in favor of reducing the number of positions, but reallocating them-
Councillor, sorry I have to cut you off.
Reallocating them and redefining their roles is helpful. Thank you.
I believe that I generally disagree with you. I think safety starts with people uniting. When there's unity, people feel safe. What he's mentioning, what he's talking about is making people feel safe. But the true safety, true safety is not really law enforcement. And law enforcement, I'm in support with our law enforcement. But when it comes to safety of our community, we have to look into many different areas, right? So mentioning that, I want to support more programs that invest in mental health issues. Making sure that we understand what is the problem that most people are struggling. People who have trauma, people with different backgrounds, people with disabilities, all those sort of issues we have in our community. Find a way, a gateway to help those people. And that's a way to create safety. And once people feel that they're supported, but also welcome and united in our city, I think that's it. Even the police department, I think they could be something that, you know, it's a positive thing. It's a positive thing. I think mental health issues is one of the issues we still have, and we don't really talk about it.
Thanks. If I could just follow up one. I agree entirely, Fisto, that much of law enforcement's problems or challenges center around mental health issues and substance abuse. There's no doubt about that. But I will tell you, a couple of years ago, someone was breaking into my car, and I confronted them, and I was threatened with a knife. At that point, my inclination wasn't to call Riverbend and schedule a mental health session. My safety and the safety of my community was at mind. And I needed to call 911, and I needed help immediately. So that first responder is important. But I do recognize that those other issues can certainly contribute to it and certainly should be addressed.
This is a really important issue. Can I follow up on that?
No, I think it's time for us to move on, unfortunately. We want to make sure we get to everything. Currently, members of the public who attend city council meetings can only weigh in in a designated public hearing on a fixed topic. Would you support the addition of open public comment sessions in council meetings? Why or why not? And councillor, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I would not be opposed to it necessarily. I know other communities have a system set up such as that. If we ever did go down that road, the only ask I would make of the mayor or my fellow councillors is that there's a strict time limit. There's a strict two-minute limit as to the input. So I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I think there needs to be some structure that would go along with such a method.
First thing, I want to make sure that the community understands. I want to bring the government to the people. And I want to make sure that the voices of the people are heard and the decisions are made by people, not by politicians. And that's something we've failed to do for most years, is to allow people to speak their struggles and figure out how to make sure that we're communicating, we're engaging with the community. And what we see is that the fact that, you know, there's that disconnection, right? That disconnection and the idea that there's no strategy. There has never been strategy on the issues we talk about, on the things that are happening around our city, even the changes we want to make. And when we talk about strategy, we're talking about, we see a lot of things happen. It's more like a reaction on things. You know, you ask about why this happened. They tell you that the first time it happened, this is what happened. And then somebody else, or something happened, and then it changed. We need to have a strategy on every single item on our leadership to make sure that the community is welcome, to make sure we hear from the community, we make decisions that the community supports. So having the community to engage with politicians, I think it's one of the most important steps we're going to make. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you both. So this next question is going to be related to Steeplegate Mall. Do you all believe the city should form a public-private partnership, tax increment financing district, or give other financial support to the redevelopment of Steeplegate Mall? And we'll start with you, Mr. DeShimy.
Can you repeat the question? Can you repeat it, again?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can I repeat it? Do you all believe the city should form a public-private partnership, tax increment financing district, or give other financial support to the redevelopment of the Steeplegate Mall?
I, no. I support. I think that that space, it needs something. We need to have something there as soon as possible and something that is going to invest in the community. I should be talking to the people. Something that, something that will invest in our community in the future. Something sustainable. And so when you talk about taxes, I don't think we should be, you know, I don't think we should be using taxpayers' money to engage with developers or whatever. I think developers should be paying taxes. They should be paying taxes. And we make sure that homeowners, people who are renting, they are not struggling around whether they're going to make payment, I mean, rent, or they're going to pay their mortgage and be able to pay taxes at the end of the year. I think we have to make sure that we're investing in our community, not taking away from our community. And find the strategy to make sure that we're investing in the future and make sure we're investing in more reliable energy, you know, in modern constructions. So I'm not into anything that would come and start eating our taxpayers' money. No. We want to make sure that taxpayers' money are used wisely and not being taken away from our people.
Thank you. I would very much be in favor of TIF district or 79E for the Steeplegate Mall, depending on the detail. And as it stands, the property's been purchased by a developer. They intend on developing the property. So at this point, it's a negotiation as to how much the city should or needs to contribute to see that project come to fruition. Now, the idea that businesses should shoulder all the taxes paid in the city is just not sustainable. Businesses pay a huge amount of taxes in this city. And honestly, they don't put any kids in the schools. So they are subsidizing our schools in a large part. Now, the more commercial development we can put on the books, the more commercial taxes that are paid is less of a burden on residential property taxes. So if we can make smart economic development in our businesses and commercial development, it's only going to help the local taxpayer. So I'm very much in favor of seeing that project come through. I'm not in a position just to say yes to TIF or yes to 79E. The devil's in the details, but I'm not opposed to it whatsoever. It's been blighted and empty for almost 20 years, and something needs to happen sooner than later.
Thank you.
Could you just explain what the different tax things were that you were asking about? I didn't understand the question. I didn't understand which, you know, one was a public-private partnership. Could you just explain what that is, or?
Absolutely. That's a great point. I'm going to go forward. If you guys have corrections or additions you want to make to my explanation, let me know. In terms of a public-private partnership, that's sort of an umbrella term. So the city could potentially work with the developer on offering them certain portions of the project. "We'll build this road for you," or "We'll make this certain sewer upgrade for you" that otherwise would be on the developer to make. Because when a project gets built, for the most part, upgrades that are required for that project are on the developer to make. Now, cities, places all over the country, can entice projects to come in by saying, "We'll relieve these costs from you," or "We'll make a deal with you on these costs if you come to our place, if you redevelop this blighted property in our city." Specifically, a tax increment financing district is an arrangement where the tax level set at the property where it's at is fixed. And the additional revenue that comes in from added value to that property is set aside for specific purposes related to things that happen within the TIF. So for example, there's a TIF up near Merchant's Way. And so as added revenue related to taxes, as that property increases in value come in, that money gets set aside in a pool that goes towards certain projects or endeavors that happen within the TIF. And 79E, do you want to explain 79E since you mentioned it specifically?
Sure. 79E is a state statute that allows municipalities to allow a developer to come in, renovate a property. So if its assessed value is $100,000 today, the developer puts $500,000 into it. Now we have an assessed value of $600,000. 79E allows for a set number of years, and it varies. I think the maximum is eight years. I'm not positive on that. But in any case, the city can set for a fixed number of years the original value of that property. So a developer would come in, make renovations, and would say, "Hey, if you're willing to do this, because this is a project that we as a city think is very important, we want to give you some incentive to do that, you'll only pay taxes for the next three years on the baseline value of it. Those improvements you made will not be taxed until after three years, five years, whatever the agreement is." So it's basically incentive to get developers to come in and fix up properties. Now, the advantage for the city, in my opinion, is it allows us and allows our community to target specific neighborhoods or specific buildings, and we have a little skin in the game. And I will also add that if we have a little skin in the game, we can say to a developer, "Hey, you're going to build apartments. We're going to give you a tax break through that 79E for three years, five years. Here's what we want in return. We want 20% of that to be affordable or below average rent." So we can, in my opinion, we can say that as a city because we're giving something back to the developer. I've never been in favor of trying to dictate to a developer what to build, how to build it, or how to spend their money. It's their money, their risk. But if we're giving something up in return, and that would be tax revenue for a fixed period of time, I think we have every right in the world to ask in direct development in a direction that we see is going to benefit Concord as a whole.
Councillor, thank you. I just, because you got to speak on this topic, I want to give you a chance to add anything or respond to what you've heard if you'd like. If you'd like to. I just make sure we're going to be open there.
Yeah, I wanted to add. For some reason why I'm opposed to some of these, you know, high-cost projects, I want to bring our city council back together. And I want to bring the community back together. And to rethink about the community we have, diverse community we have. If we're making, if we're coming up with all these projects and we still don't have a strategy on how we're going to make our community thrive, and if we have already hundreds of developments- And, and if we have already hundreds of like develop, developments we've done, like housing and and still with, we still have homeless on the streets. We saw people moving out, out of Concord because they can't afford homes. What does that mean to them? So my focus is to remind our city council and our, our people, our community in general, and to fight for everybody, by the way, that we need to rethink about our strategy. Do we actually have a strategy? If we don't have a strategy, what kind of strategy should we come up to minimize the cost on, on, on property? Like ta- taxes, making sure that renters are able to rent and, and pay rent? Not, and not kicking people out and, and having home, why are we, why are we having homeless on the streets? Doesn't make sense anymore. To me, that's why I'm, that's why I'm running. I want to make sure that there's accountability and making sure that we, we create, we come up with a better strategy of how to bring our community up.
Mister Nashman.
And to make sure we thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. This actually dovetails nicely because our next question does also have to do with everyone's favorite topic, planning and housing. Those topics, housing, updates to our regulations and zoning are a top issue in Concord among people running for these council races, among people who you see in coffee shops and on the street every day. This past Tuesday was the last day of city planner Emily Skinner. She left the city. In an interview with the Monitor, she said that the city manager's office has persistently held up housing reforms, delayed projects with bureaucratic back and forth, and made overreaching demands on developers that have slowed things down. The city manager's office has declined to comment. This is the second city planner that Concord has lost within a two-year span and on the eve of a master plan update. What is your response to her departure? And do you think that Concord has an issue with how it engages with developers? Councillor Keach, I know you've mentioned this topic broadly in your survey, and so I'm anxious to hear from you first.
Sure. Thank you. In terms of specifics as to what happened or what didn't happen with the current planner or the former planner, I should say at this point, I don't have any details about that, so I can't comment specifically about that. So I don't know. Generally speaking, going through two city planners in the course of two years is a problem. And I see that as an issue that needs to be addressed. At what level, I, I'm not sure, but those are questions I do plan on asking because I think it's important. In general, I will say, I don't think Concord enjoys a really great reputation with developers in terms of how easily it is to do business here. I think it, it's perceived as it being a very cumbersome community, not particularly friendly in, in getting things done. I know south of here, developers will tell you they have a much different experience. And that's not to say that we need to relax our standards. I don't think we'd need to do that at all, but I think we need to be clear with our standards. Developers are looking for two things. They want consistency and predictability. They want to know what the rules are going into it. They can create a pro forma, figure out if it's gonna work for them financially or not. If it does work, great. But they don't want to find out halfway through the project that the goalposts are suddenly moved and the rules are changed. That makes for a lot of uncertainty. And if a developer has a choice of developing in Concord or Manchester and they know they're gonna have a harder time of it here, they're gonna make that decision. Currently, Manchester is booming with housing. And we ought to be seeing a little more of that, certainly. Thank you.
A few things I want to mention about that. I, I think we need better, clear path in, in engaging our developers, right? And what we want to prioritize is efficiency. Again, for me, it's about cost. And it's also about accessibility. And it's also about inclusion. It's also about making sure that everybody is able to call Concord a home. And, and when you look into that, you realize that, you know, you've mentioned like some changes happen. I, I think, I think what's, what's, what's prob- what's the problem is that we need to have our own regulations. We need to have our own path of how we're gonna be engaging in our, with our developers. And when I look, talk about efficiency, we talk about, you know, something that we invest in the future. Just an example, right? If we're talking about electricity. We need to invest in solar system. That's, that's an example, right? We need to look into like a lot of empty buildings we have downtown. And most of them, some of those are old. And invest in those buildings and renovate those buildings and make sure that people that are investing in our city can access those buildings. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So we do have an audience submitted question. We're just gonna take one for right now in the interest of time. Let's put it to both of you. What is your thought of tiny house village? And we'll start with you, mister Nashman.
I, I, I think I'm still learning about a lot of things. And, and that's one of the things that I'm still learning about. But, but I would be more interested in, in, in better and, and something that, something that lasts longer, permanent solution to our housing. Not other options that are limited and not accessible.
Thank you. I would be supportive of looking at that if, if it's done in a, in a, in a good way. I myself live in a, in a tiny house. I have a seven hundred square foot condo downtown of Concord. So living in a small amount of space is affordable, number one. And economically is great for the environment and good for a whole lot of other reasons. But certainly tiny villages, a good idea. We've talked about the so-called AUDs, accessory, auxiliary, accessory unit development. I forget exactly the name, but anyway, it allows for you to, to basically build an in-law apartment or such a thing in, in your, in your backyard. Up to now, that's been prohibited. So there's small things like that that can be done that can help the houses' housing crunch and, and make it affordable. I've, myself have three younger kids now. They're twenty-seven, thirty-two, and thirty-three. And I just don't see a path forward as to how they're gonna afford a house. So it's, it's, it scares me. It really does. And I, and I'll use that opportunity just to say one thing about what Fisto mentioned, about our younger generation and so forth. I'm more encouraged than ever, just based on my kids, about how civically engaged they are, forward-thinking, just thinking about the world in a way that I never did at that age. So I happen to be very encouraged. So I, I think we're headed in the right direction, Fisto.
Thank you.
Keep the faith.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Can I, can I add to that? Can I?
Very quickly.
Yeah, so I, I feel, I feel, okay. It's, it's a reality. I, I am, I'm, I'm, I'm not okay with the fact that Concord, when I came here as a refugee, Concord used to have a lot of people around. But now you look at it, like, things changed and, and that's a problem. So I deny to think that I want to move to a different city or a different state, which I've traveled many areas, but Concord is gonna remain in my city. And we must make sure that young people are thriving in our city and call Concord home, not moving out, but call Concord home and stay in our community and make sure our communities thrive.
Time for us to move on. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
One final question before we move on to, to closing statements.
Sure.
Rising property taxes are always, but especially now, a top concern of city residents. At the same time, a lot of leaders say, people don't want to have their city services cut down. Both debt service and compensation, two of the biggest drivers in the city budget, are almost certain to go up next year. And barring a, a really miraculous jump in tax-based development, the valuation's not gonna equal that out, right? So where can the council find reductions in the city budget? And we will start with mister Nashman.
Reductions is gonna come from a better and a new strategy because we do have to see a strategy. And the strategy is going to include many, many few things I've, have put down, put down, but I can't read or not. But specifically, we have to make sure that our roads are more safe. And we have to make sure that housing is much cheaper. We have to reduce our taxes at least by, by three percent. I think, I think it's reasonable. And, and, and making sure that homeowners pay less, if not, if nothing. And, and that's gonna bring our, our economy back. Because if, if people are not being taxed a lot and developers are being taxed, I think that's a slight change that we can make. But we'd bring our community up and bring our community back together and actually figure out how, how, how to solve other issues that we have, disconnections we have in our community. We gotta start from, you know, housing, making sure that there's low cost on, of everything. Make sure that citizens are able to like pay their mortgage, their rent. And that's gonna bring our taxes down. I think that's the strategy.
Just briefly, in about ten or fifteen seconds, though, where in the city budget do you think the council can find reductions in spending?
I, I think working, engaging with the developers. Engaging with developers. I think they, they need to come up with a, a, a smart idea, strategy of how to engage with developers. And who are those developers? And how much are they making us pay, even for the future? What are we looking into the future? Are they developing something that is going to?
It's councillor's turn. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. You know, I look at this question a little differently. We can certainly reduce services and reduce the budget. But also, I think at the same time, it's important we ask ourselves, is there an opportunity to increase revenue through non-tax methods that, that affect the property, residential property owner? The reality is, between the fire department, the police department, and general services, that can, that comprises eighty-five percent of our budget. Of that eighty-five percent, roughly seventy-five percent of those dollars in each of those departments go to compensation and benefits. So if you're talking about reducing services, you're talking about reducing people. So I would throwback in the lap of the community and say, of the police department, of the fire department, and of general services, what do you want to see cut? What do you want to see less of? Do you want your roads plowed less often? Do you want your roads paved less often? Or are you willing to pay for that service? That's a, that's a conversation I'm willing and think is important for the community to have. Because really, if you want to reduce the tax, you need to reduce services. And I'm not sure, as a community, we're prepared to do that yet. But that's a conversation that, that should be had. The last point I want to make is the, the amount of non-tax property in Concord is, is huge. It's almost thirty percent. So of all the assessed value in Concord, thirty percent of it pays no taxes because it's nonprofit, charity, whatnot. It qualifies under state law.
Councillor, sorry.
Okay, but as a comparison, Manchester has nineteen percent, Lacony has thirteen percent.
Councillor, I'm so sorry.
We're way up there. That, that needs to be addressed.
Thank you so much. And with that, we will move on to closing statements, and we will start with you, councillor Keach.
Thank you. I'll go back to where I started, I guess, and just, you know, go back to saying, we need to identify the wants and the needs, figure out as a community what's important and what we need to spend our money on. I don't know anyone who is running for elected office that is running on the platform that I'm gonna raise your taxes. That generally doesn't work. I'm here to say I'm gonna minimize any tax increase that I can possibly, possibly affect. But the reality is, with increased compensation for our employees, we need to stay competitive. We need to attract and retain good people. I'm not about underpaying employees because I truly believe you pay for what you get. If you want to start underpaying people and getting unqualified people, you will pay a price down the road that exceeds any, any savings. So I'm not in favor of that. So I think it's important that we identify those needs and wants and go forward. And I just want to leave with an optimistic note, what I said before, you know, particularly with my kids. I, I'm optimistic about the future, optimistic about our younger people. I see Concord changing. I see Concord changing in a good way. And I really want to look forward, not at what Concord was, but what Concord is gonna become.
Yeah, so I want to ensure you that our community is, is moving forward with unity and working together. And what I, what I want to bring to the community is making sure that our community is more accessible and inclusive. And that, I'm gonna start with young people. I want to make sure that young people feel welcome in our, in our city. And that's through, I'm gonna create a city, I mean, a student council. And those young people are responsible to come up with ideas and to come up with the solutions of the, the disconnections we have in, generations we, you know, young generations are moving out of Concord. We want to make sure that we have a solution to that. I want to make sure that housing doesn't become a problem again. Like, we, we see this as a big issue in our city, and a lot of people are struggling. And most of those people that are struggling doesn't have access to speaking, their struggles. They don't, they don't, they are left out. But I want to make sure that we bring those people and make sure that we bring the government to those people so that their solutions can be given. And I want to make sure that we have safe roads. And also, most importantly, I want to make sure that the city council works together to bring the, the, the ideas and to bring the solutions that works for people, not for them. So basically, it's about, not about politi- politicians, it's about true leadership. We need to have true leadership in our city. And until we have unity and we're able to come, come together and, and find the common, a common purpose, I think we're still disconnected. And, and I want to make sure that that's not something that we'll talk about in next two years or next four years.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, candidates. With that, that, our large council is concluded.
Just quickly, because these are gonna get, videos are gonna get cut separately. I want to thank Concord TV for being here with us tonight and for producing this video. I want to thank you all again for coming. We'll take a four-minute break. We will start shortly after.